Oh Lord, we are thankful for all that you have blessed us with and given us. We are mindful of our country this season and tomorrow is an election. We ask, oh Lord, that we elect the proper individuals who will work hard for those that they are supposed to represent and that we elect God willing and his weapons. Lord, we pray to you that you are God of the universe and you are not up for elections, but you reign and govern in the affairs of man. We ask that we live our lives in devotion to you and that we treat one another with respect and kindness, regardless of our political division. Help us to praise your name, Jesus and we pray.
Amen. I pray to thee, to the flag, how many times I declare it, and I do this above, always again, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go on to item number three, approval of the amended agenda. And I've been asked to move fourteen A to be four A. And that is the what you consider approval of last resolution, naming the bridge at Rocky Creek, the Norman Hays called Bridge. Also, I would like to add, I would like to reflect fourteen A with the what you discussed with Red Cloud and the Peter's Hall. Are there any other additions, additions or additions to the agenda we're dealing with? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No, 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 no.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Dill. Any further discussion? If not, all the sayers say aye. All the present persons, son, motion, carry. This is a public hearing, not a court, the ones who received this were the things that were located on two homes, the shared program, and the replacement of three homes in the T U B D program set at this day at fifteen yam or extending their address possible.
Thank you, Miss, I need your list, double date, could you please? We got one from third by reason in construction immediately, one to four homes, we will also order a very long construction.
So, here on the first, so, I watch your chair. Who's our commissioning, the license, the access?
It should be, uh, Dave, I believe, Dave, you see, and myself.
Good to hear.
This is for the public, let's see, open these this evening. And these kids will go before this committee and the committee will check on them and make sure that everything is there that we need and then they'll come back usually at the next, ten before meeting with a recommendation. Okay, uh, the first one is third by reason, from Newberry. And all the Carter, Darwin, and Erie Carter, from it.
So, still, files about the business?
It's really strong.
We feel you, so?
Thank you, thank you. Then, yes, that's all money from, yes, ma'am. And that was English, from Carter.
Is third by reason on yet, ma'am?
That yellow one you said is name?
Uh, Darwin Carter, what's your name?
Okay, on Albert Parkfield. That total bid is eighty-five thousand five hundred. You know, all the DMs there, you want me to recheck it all just, or is that something?
Not.
Just supposedly, okay. Eighty-five thousand five hundred. On Richard McDonald. The total bid is ninety-nine thousand nine hundred. Ninety-seven, ninety-nine, eight hundred. And I, I think these all these demolitions and restructures. Linda Ingram. That total bid is sixteen thousand seven hundred. Lily Griffin is twenty-four thousand seven hundred. Twenty-four thousand one hundred seventy. And the next one is Laura Hall. Heartbeat is Linda Ingram. That total bid is seventy thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars.
Forty-seven?
Seventy thousand seven forty-seven, Linda Ingram. The next one is Lily Griffin. Total bid is twenty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The next one is Parkfield, Albert Parkfield. And that total is eighty-six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Nine seventy, nine seventy. Next one is Richard McDonald. That total bid is ninety-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The next one is Gary Walters, construction. Okay, the first bid there is Gilbert Parkfield. It's eighty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The next one is Lily Griffin. That bid is twenty-nine thousand five hundred. The next one is Linda Ingram. And it's sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. The next one is Richard McDonald. And that total bid is a hundred and one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. And so, uh, this will be all passed on to the next, fourth year. And next, public, uh, of what's the next reason, there are none. Will those who consider items, classes, votes, key, or, or, or? Okay, is there a motion to be dismissed? What is the what you consider approval of last resolution, naming the bridge at Rocky Creek, the Norman Hays called Bridge? Is there a motion to be dismissed, per solution, in this case?
Motion, that, that, this, please, is our, is?
We have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Dill. All the sayers say aye.
Aye.
All the present persons, son, motion, carry, petition.
This is a resolution of Board County Commission, of Fair County Forest, making the bridge at Rocky Creek the Norman Hays called Bridge in honor of Norman Hays Hall. Whereas the Board County Commission, Fair County Forest, has informed that citizens of the county want to honor the memory of a World War II hero, Norman Hays Hall. And whereas the hall, David Ducking, was marched P eleven nineteen forty-three, in state separation, in November twenty-eight nineteen forty-five. And whereas the hall, within twenty-seven, armor be enjoyed, street battalion, nine hundred soldiers of the United States Army, despite the first class and the rifle in seven thirty-four, he sustained a sharp injury while in combat, and was a prisoner of war from December twenty-second nineteen forty-four to April seventeen nineteen forty-five in Germany. And whereas the hall was awarded the European African Medal, Eastern Campaign Medal, the American Campaign Medal, the World War II Victory Medal, and a Purple Heart. Whereas the Board County Commission determined that it should be, and it should be provided to honor the former Hays Hall. Therefore, being resolved, by Board County Commission, of Fair County Forest, that the Rocky Creek Bridge, Fair County, shall now begin the Norman Hays Hall Bridge. That's the document, the record, that the Fair County Forest, this is this day of November, uh, two thousand eighteen.
Now, Eric, I'm going to do a stop to the reference.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Dill. Page, by the discussion, if not, all the sayers say aye.
Aye.
All the present persons, son, motion, carry, yes.
It's a great honor to be to be a British force, and it's an honor for my neighbor, I mean, it's a honor quite well, to all the folks. And same, I have to say, tell the other of my neighbors that, that Commissioner Page, well, any of you would like saying, but, uh, we already had some mirrors, and we looked up against the wall, we had a little by all, but, but, Eric, a little bit, I'm sure.
I'm glad.
You may all say that.
I feel I appreciate all of y'all, and when those don't prefer a part of it.
Thank you. That's, that's where all the Mr. Roberts, Harry, I talked to him, he's kind of adding a little bit, he's kind of, he has come, but he doesn't know that. I'm glad I had, because a lot of talks to, in fact, is you need three or four days for dedication, fifteen minutes, so, out at the bridge, we got signed, ordered, two signs. And we'll have other records, the guard guy also will have a dedication. And then, uh, be short, a little shorter, yes. And, uh, you also said, a lot of tonight's stuff, maybe in December, we're getting free stuff. So, a lot of working with, he's done all the work, I give him credit. And, and we also get a short program, and while we're doing that, uh, I know two people, I want to ask you to say, people are very interested in, in their affairs. And one of our very old chairman, Commissioner Page, who's done this while, and her art is with better. So, we just, he gets that honor.
He's very honored.
And you'll get it for three years.
Oh.
And I thought, unless you gonna have a different, our just retired veteran, very thoughtful. He's local, that's more than, I, I think, Trump down here. But I thought we didn't keep it local and civil, it's like two more people. There's nothing more for better than Pam Dingell and Jill Cox. A lot of gonna say prayer, at least it's spread, you don't have to speak. Uh, a lot of his promises, uh, of those babies, and that they fought a war, but a lot speaks to that. You have a little schedule, although that.
I like, yes, that they have, uh, retired lady officers, or they, they more.
Sure. Ricky, that's Mark, and he's always good, it's his women. We're gonna have, uh, we're gonna, I didn't leave anybody out, anybody out, you think of. I'm gonna have you up. So, we got the same loot, and again, I more appreciate him for it. But before he made a good man, he served country well, and not only was he, uh, an outstanding, uh, tailor, but, you know, I have a person that's, like, you know, like a walkie. And I think I told you the story, for the gigs out there, so you can just call, get a walkie. But, appreciate it, it's all coming, and it's mine to be able to do this for our very deserved, uh, my people. Thanks, thank you, y'all stay a lot of real.
And I want to say a couple of things, first, he really caught me by the mouth, but, but, thank you. It's the, uh, honor for me to.
Well, if we made some progress, might be our family, though. Please, please, it should be all right, along the whole, to three minutes.
But I want to tell you, there's times like this, when we enjoy sitting up here as the end of County Committee, when we can do something like this, that's so special, to honor a veteran, and he waited his time at the name of bridge, that's a veteran to me, that's so special, and I appreciate, and I appreciate y'all being here and supporting us.
Thank you very much, that's it. And we done all, get it with it. Y'all stay with us, long, long as we gather.
Thank you. Next, uh, we're going to have a third item, five, three, fourteen. Does anybody have a question about any of these, that's their item?
That's your hour, seven, seven, four, number seven, often presented, for some comments about me, and then, and then we can set you. Is that okay?
No, fine.
I'm going to approve all of them, and then I, I'll.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Dill. Any of you, uh, questions? If not, all the sayers say aye.
Aye.
All the present persons, son, motion, carry. Okay, item number seven.
Item number seven. The Board can present a payment of invoice, two of them, for transportation equalization cost to Dixie County, for our fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, that's been a long time. That's forty-four thousand dollar invoice. In fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, that's another forty-four thousand dollars. And this is presented by Daniel. Well, I found that first. Now, all the, uh, committee, I don't care, know this, but it was public. When this interregional freedom created off of, solidly, landfill, was from created. Fair County is part of that interregional freedom, and their operations for most four years is Fair County will pay Dixie County, Dixie County, forty-four thousand dollars. Y'all can go ahead and say Dixie County. I left them out, because they don't, you don't protect it. They don't have enough garbage going to landfill, we have, and the reason, the commission's AI. Ricky Raul, our lady, was on board then, and it's real. And the reason was, it's a, it's a great system, where Dixie County brought these, the whole garbage to off of, there is a fair guy, so we had to have enough garbage. Till that forward, why? Instead of why, Dixie County, to get them to go into four county groups to form the landfill. Now, why Dixie County waited two years to send the invoice, the invoice was paid by landfill. Instead of the landfill getting the invoice from Dixie County, they called it construction office. And, you know, these two invoices came in at the same time, I talked to Mr. Page. All the communities invoice, just after yesterday, they were the construction office. But I don't know, maybe they have got plenty of money in Dixie County, they had just money, forty-four thousand. But this is money that the public has been budgeting, and, uh, it has been budgeted, sure, since it's been forty-four thousand. I know, I've been here for, uh, four, two years, I've been here. Now, they want to explain that. And stop the landfill's fault, but to get a invoice, that was due back in two thousand, oh, two thousand and fifteen. And Dixie County's fault, then the landfill got the invoice, Dixie County admitted the invoice, they don't do. And by the same bank book, then the landfill checks, landfill invoice, got checked, Dixie County. And so, white thing set up, and Dixie County goes for their money, for the landfill, not for Dixie County. It's fixed. Only really good thing about this is that there was no CBI or place. Yeah, you know, I, I've led a city. Now, uh, you know, our, I'm getting more details, probably, I need to get down to week two. Fair County has the right to assess the shirt garbage, over every ton of garbage, every county, and the landfill. And that's seven dollars covered. That seven dollars, you use, made this forty-four thousand, and to maintain it over the landfill. So, it, it, uh, it, that seven dollars, I don't know what we do, we have to give that up. We'd be, we'd be, we'd be hurting, a little more than our rate off. All the ones that take that, you can't, you can't come up, you're, I thought that was.
Well, while we're coming up here, does the seven dollars a time cover the same?
Because that, and because part of this is done, the salary, the fee, the charge, it's many. Gary, you might know where it's well, it's my cover.
It, uh, basically, the landfill closed down now, so basically, that's done, uh, covers Canada. And the money, basically, just sits there.
And it covers melody and fertilizer?
Yeah, we low, low and burnt lives. We don't have to mark the old wells up there anymore. Never could tell what wells went bad, so we got no reserve out there. Oh, I'm all about to take it. I thought it was only a gin, and I keep going back. I was in town, had some of that ground here, starting up two and six thousand, all the plan, the landfill. It's what was supposed to happen, Dixie County was gonna pay that fee for three years, and it was for the doorway, and then get there, put, good, and the people were involved, and on the way to New York City. It doesn't matter, that's what it is, just down the road, that, that, that's what happened. Should be paying, that's what it is, anyway, I know for a fact, that's getting sometimes hurt. If this decision, you set a, you, what it's worth. Now, this, this commission, you know, the, uh, interregional bridge, says any county can, that's a truck. We don't do that. Special quarters out, and it may not, uh, want to, uh, that's the county that doesn't have to do it, or ask it, because they're the whole county. Just to collect, just to pay theirs, but they didn't accept, because of the government. And, uh, Dixie Court, they're not gonna set, sell, pay the sale, so I mean, you don't tell them. I'll take them that three years off, but.
I think it's right, that was the common truth, supposed to go away, and I'm worried too many, so I don't know where to. I know, I paid it in the landfill, and it's, uh, well, this board can make that seven dollars go away. But then we will have to increase your tax, both of the county hours, and that, so that's all of them have earned.
And if you'll notice, this is the page in sixteen seventy, that they make these already over there, that you will sort of, y'all know.
We got another one coming. Gary, you got some money, you didn't know, shoot somewhere out there, we play it, we're gonna do it. And, uh, I just wanted to say all that information.
Thank you for that.
Now, I'm going to approve, uh, number seven, over the present, and then I.
Okay, we have a motion.
Thank you.
And it's text, by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Dill. Any further discussion? If not, all the sayers say aye.
Aye.
All the present persons, son, motion, carry.
But, uh, it's not, not people.
Now, did you say that actually fourteen is not, is not by the definition, is fourteen A? Say the end fourteen A, so it's now four A, we hear.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's a, yeah. Fourteen A, the logic is, um, is what is A here?
But that.
Yeah, uh, I want you to, with South Beach, West Side, and computer control. I don't know if you all, that's a study that I got today, but there is some final case of West Side building in Fair County. And so, um, I just wanted to make sure, um, we're telling you that, tell me about what it's about, computer control, what's going now. Are we still actively praying?
Yes, I'm, yes, we, uh, we got notification from the health department, we're going to.
Can I come on?
I, I have heard about, yeah, I do, yeah, basically, uh.
Yeah, there's one in Tyler County, it's from the health department. You go back and check your emails, maybe.
I think I've seen that one.
Yeah, you, you probably.
All of it, at least.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we are adequately praying, actively trying, some, bring something back that what you're doing.
The health department, like, uh, they wasn't sure, so they sent us out, and it was raining that night, so we just, uh, hold, until it rained, and sprayed the area that I got.
This fresh was left out, or?
I do not.
I don't do, what area is, uh, we should say?
It's over, Jefferson, and that area, it's, it's.
Oh, in the city.
Okay, so, which, uh, what is the fresh angle, or is it, is it set up right now, or?
It has, what they'll do, uh, we're mandated, we're going to spray it three days, five days. So, we're waiting for the health department, the public side, and all, so, you know, whatever. And, you know, the calls, the calls we're getting right now, is the beach area, everything, everything else, it's, well, no.
But, do they have plenty of fresh?
I've got two, so, yeah, two weeks.
And how long do you plan to continue doing this?
Well, we get the calls, and then the health department have to leave it on what direction, uh, you know, what they want.
Okay, so I would recommend to the stewardess, like, you know, along the street. Uh, it's, um, the calls, the stewardess, from, from, from County, in the phone booth, and they go down to the machine control, give them a call, and, uh, if you don't get a answer, I think they have an answering machine, and if you have any problem, uh, somebody knows, if that one, you let us know, and, uh, I'm sure that it's going to be taken care of, and, uh, we want to knock this out with the students, and protect our people.
And, uh, we got the notification, like, that morning, it said, Leon too, so Leon, yeah, it's around the third.
I'm thinking, yeah, stand up, I'm down here. Um, yeah, I think it's important, now, to know, without, uh, call, if you don't try, then they didn't call, it's fine. I'll try the whole county, unless there's an accident.
Yeah, so, again, if you have, uh, any problems, you call in, and, um, you, you get, talk to somebody, read a message with your name, and your address, and, um, they just get out fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Well.
Thank you.
On the request, there are none, also, items, there are none, and finally, maybe, of course, there are none. Political officers of the government unit, number fifteen, the current and the tax collector, so appear to discuss with the board, annual background sticker.
Now, Karen, our tax collector is not made yet, and our community, need side of the property, which will pull out of town, nearly in.
With your.
Well, that's good.
No, no, it's okay.
Ah, we won't.
Okay, coming back, I'm number sixteen, the board consider proof of amendment to the Department of Environmental Protection, we receive coastal partnership, sub grant agreement for the senior county, sub grant docking area improvement project, as intended by the grant coordinator. And this is, um, this is going from December the third birthday of twenty eighteen to September the third year in twenty nineteen. Everybody there, there's one.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve this?
There are.
Now, motions, what commission are paying, second by commission, are you, any further discussion?
Uh, uh, I know that it's probably, we're here, um, I think it's been going on for a couple years, the government's late on, Corbin's here, it's permanent. Um, the, this project, we got, I'm on a label back home, you know, uh, so, um, they decided that they should have acquired, maybe, that last, last, this project. You don't, uh, I don't think it's the, uh, the, or, you know. We, I mean, we had a lot of work, then you say, yeah, so, that's, that's, that's been resolved.
Oh, I think we have a market, uh, any other, uh, discussion? If not, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, like, period, by number seventeen, the board consider approval of the GNDM, the contract with state housing and needs, this partnership, with this chip program. The then track the services, with government services, group E, D, and G, to extend the contract for a period of one year, as intended by the grant coordinator. And they're looking to approve the, uh, the contract.
I will.
Okay, so, we have a Russian market, we're here, second by, you're apparently in.
It does. I can not, yes, on this, uh, duty, and, uh, play, why I want to go there, which is, this lesson, uh, was. And, uh, then, uh, to, I see. Uh, I, 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 I don't know how that's, I, I'm a little far.
Okay.
Okay, well, anybody want to say aye, try it?
Okay, so, here, we get a motion?
We have a motion, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Aye.
Like the passing. Thank you.
Yeah, well.
I'm eighteen, the board consider approval of Department of Environmental Protection, we receive consent order, as intended by Gary Womble, Environmental Services Director. Oh, I can say something about this, it said that, the D E T said that necessary permit was not obtained to operate the air incinerator located at, at Environmental Services Department. It had this been obtained, and this consent order requires a payment of one thousand three hundred dollars for penalty, cost, and expenses. I want to know how this happened, and who's responsible?
Here, here.
Say yes.
Here, I'm looking.
Yeah, how did this happen?
This, this, uh, what happened, Senator, uh, Jack hired a woman, uh, that, uh, this person, uh, nobody gets counted, it was exactly how they, it was like. It says, oh, that probably on a page, uh, that it's, really, yeah, really hard to, to open from. And somewhere, I don't know, I think Jack left, while they do, it took several months, uh, yeah, eight months, ten months, it's just, uh. And when he got it, Jack was already gone, Dustin appeared. And, uh, permit we got, they said it was a five-year permit, and it was, but what it was, construction permit. What was true permit, is that there was, a construction and an operational permit. And when, we were under the assumption that it was good for two twelve, two thousand nineteen. But when they came in, they said that the permit, uh, we had an operational permit, that's true, uh, already, yeah, true, but, uh.
So, the, the people that wrote it, and understand, is that, is that what you tried to say?
Basically, or they did notify Dustin, he didn't, maybe didn't understand what was going on. I wasn't involved in the permit, because I'm like that, well, I'm working on it secondhand information, but, uh, it was two permits involved, one was a construction, and good for five years, that's true. But the operational permit, when you got an operation, when they told me you had to handle it for six months, I think you got it, uh. And I don't have a lot of time for this.
Yeah.
I remember one time, we were talking about getting contractors to bring their stuff out there, there was some way, and that time, a lot of money, and Dustin said he was working in that direction, I remember Dustin playing, too, another company, he was working on, so they must not, that's about ten, about ten years. Uh, I don't know, I, I don't know, I remember me, or.
We, it was all, we were, we were talking about how that contractor appeared to be out there, and green, uh, and, uh, and remember Dustin saying, I hear him speaking, there was, there was, Dustin, he had a, yeah. But, you know, I got off, I got away, he had, I don't know, I was working, but I remember that conversation here, you know.
And the permit, the operating permit, we did it in house, it was federally central, we think we did it in one day. And, uh, yeah, since we have the good provision, that they will be, they are, just somebody that's moving town.
You're good to go now, yeah, we're not wild.
Yeah, I just think we have to be more diligent, this is a thousand three hundred dollars of taxpayer money, that the taxpayers should not be having to pay, so, I don't feel like I can close with this tonight. And, uh, half our taxpayers are something that, uh, it's not their fault. Um, but with our budget the way it is, and money as high as it is, we've got to be very vigilant, that these companies all have thirteen hundred dollars, that's a thing on the law, that, that if you're working through a budget the way we do these years, thirteen hundred dollars is a lot of money.
Okay, uh, you're right, I don't want to be such a, but I read this here, I, I, I'll send you a year's low. I think I learned that reading, about third grade, so, uh, that's the same, I've been reading for seventy years. I think he wrote all this history back to you. I'll submit you all the red vocabulary you have, you used the word, staff, Mr. Suggay. Mr. Suggay, what do you do when you're Mr. Suggay?
Well, I guess, basically, not knowing, I mean, uh, my situation, I wasn't involved in a permit, even if whoever, and everybody that was, was not here, so, I don't know.
I'll second fair ground, staff, Mr. Suggay, where would that be? This five-year time, running, uh, construction, permit was time for separate life, me, and sale, company, Mr. Suggay. And, what I, what here was, is you are the member responsible for the man, so, tell the board, we've been off, so, it's all up to you. Forgive us, and we got to do all of that, and you're there in a field for this thing.
I don't know. He did not prove it, and the word, well, that's, again, we, I think, a lot of the first, you know, would be, maybe not a person, was the building, you know, we did, but.
I'll answer, uh, that's one, one, whether you got a house, do that or not. I'll listen to what Gary says, and, that's to me like a, um, it let us know that we have the right to permit. And they did, uh, stuff that, I, I'll answer that correctly.
Sure, pretty cool.
Yeah, that's good, um, I don't know that we're in fault. If they, if, if we apply for a permit, if our application for a permit was the correct permit that we applied for, and they send us a construction permit, that is the one that gives it up.
Yeah, that's my question.
Well, well, yeah, yeah, I already did, he's written some off, yeah, I already did. Captain, the original construction permit is ready. If the fly, for the, the other permit, see. And I, really, really, think right now, I send up a, and there's times that you get a permit, that's kind of the way it is, yeah. When you get a permit, you have to pay for the permit? How much is that?
This is here, I don't think so, exactly, they give this for free on this earth.
And they give it. Dog. I'm sure we're gonna pay a little bit, I think, right, I'm telling you, we're paying for the permit, it's a lot, but, and that part, I know, I have, I have. You don't, the problem is, you don't want to get into a situation where you get fined on and on and on and on. Because it's got to be something where they say, okay, pay this thirteen hundred dollars, you're done, but if you don't do that, then they keep fine, you know. Or don't, what is the, um, that's a classical matter, um, but, if y'all want me to, um, give Gary a call up there and say, look, we ain't got the money, you know, yeah, uh. And, and, the thing, thing, right, no more here.
Right, if you're willing to go all of this.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I like, you know, the question, um, in, in the seat, you know, why they didn't go to law, through their law, and when did they catch this? There's maybe something that we can do about it, but I'm just going to wait there, I'll, I'll try to.
Yeah, I agree with Gary, but we don't want to get into that, we're in a lot of war. And I, I don't want to, you got to learn, but, you know, we have, or in our, we can have a situation where we, uh, our office, we have burners, we have people separated, burners also, that, that's the way to deal with the old landfills. We had to supply a permit number of ten, the name of, or they would approve it, uh, you know, approve the re-approval, so, uh, all the time, I thought the D E T, and, of course, all these big cases, are a burden to them. They never did, was there any, any savings, but, they went, uh, uh, the permit, the permit. So, it's, it's, uh, obviously, right, I'm ready, well.
Well, we were all under the assumption that we were running, you know, with the right permit, and shocked us when we found out, I mean, I thought we were big. And, uh, basically, uh, all the information we had was, were, you know, part here, and then they, a lot of the oper, operational permit, and, uh, different.
But, I, I think there's a deadline, there's a deadline, like, tomorrow, and tomorrow, on, on the, uh.
Yeah, it's a few days, come, you know.
But anyway, I might forget what it is, but, you know.
And, Mr. Suggay, do you know how many states and balances, that, that someone is, is like, just, that, you know, when there's some of the, um, the, like, is, that somebody, has to take a wheel cabinet, or go through somebody else, or?
We weren't aware of it, and they helped us, uh, it was, it was, you know, the big, you know, you know, done in two thousand fourteen. I just want to tell you that, for your sure, I'm not.
Okay, uh, committee of voters, uh, this committee, is, is for you to, uh, make that call, or can we just put that on this?
If I, if I call Gary, uh, he's got, he's got, uh, uh, why, I think, uh, he got everything, and it, he got, he's in the fourth, seventh, uh, five, twenty, like I said, as far as that is. But, if y'all have any call, I'll, I'll make it to you, okay?
Yeah, you somebody that want to make that call?
Dustin's saying, he's been called, he's got, that's four, uh, he's, he has to do some business, the next week, so he's on deadline, I'll call later, um, I'll, uh. I may just call and, and, you know, and, and hear your best, but.
Okay, so we have.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome. Sir.
So, we got, uh, that, that, okay, so, we have a motion, and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion secured. We're down to the, uh, general business, there is none, can we, uh, turn it on, there are none, or, uh?
No.
Okay, can we administer your items, from my team, because we've been, uh, 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 uh.
Uh, I, I have leaked, there was an out, that I picked up, they signed the, on the airport property, that he was, uh, by the, the public sergeant, and, uh, yeah, it worked, you know, contract, and they first off, over this work. Uh, so we now have that property transferred to county, after that.
Yeah.
We did.
Good. Anything else?
So, um.
Any money, some of it?
Uh, number twenty, comments, two cents, from the public, we're not, intended, aye, if you do receiving, and you read the sheet on something, that will not only attend those receiving, you may come forward, say your name, and answer, and speak your briefness. Anybody? Uh-huh.
I shall remind you, always celebrate, four, three, we, fourteen, if we, if we, uh, just break, but, if you get a layer, the one, just about, four, one, three, two, three, we appreciate, uh, this is broken, this is, this is.
I think I worked on that one, let's be, that time, because, uh.
Fourteen, sir?
Fourteen. No, eight, that we, yes, fourteen. That, that's our, uh, the, it's, uh, that's the squad, and, you can do it together. You can all be at once? Yes. Yes.
And then, uh, please, it's, uh, you can all, uh, uh, we go play far less, uh, thanks, uh, uh, and all, just, uh, I had no fight, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh.
Anybody else, anything you would? If it's not, we're gonna cut to, um. Yeah, if you, uh, if you're, uh, you know, uh, again.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that was more than ninety-six.
Oh, well, I didn't know that, because, yeah, what he was, he, uh, made for, uh.
He bought, he had. That's what we were going to talk about, uh, the, uh, the, uh, party.
He had the other, like, he's, uh.
Uh, that's what I kept here, probably.
Okay, and your packet was, uh, uh, a joint request, um, uh, Martin, the package manager, about permits for, uh, something. And the, one of the issues is that if you won't see a permit, if I pay the bond, we, we, we want to sell, the bond is two thousand dollars. So, if people are to sell their permits, we don't want that, I guess, but they have to pay for that bond. And we have about two or three businesses that, uh, the lights still, they don't pay the bond. But he is a dealer, wants to sell, and they're a little dear, say they want fifteen permits, and made market permits, they, they sell, with the same title as they own them, and made markets be happy. We, we also have two boards that would love to sell, or they don't, that, you know, they're like, you can sell a permit free. And if you look, and there are many statistics that Marty gave me, that the current permit is twenty dollars, and if you pay sale tax, a dollar thirty-one, that is four eighty dollars sixty-nine cents, so, uh. So, what we were recommending is to add a fee to that, to give those businesses, if they want to go, get a bond, pay the bond. If you see a list, Martin, pay for the business, you have to go for, uh, you can call, let me, let me, uh. And if you look from there, and then you go, uh, second page, the proceeds from sale of these tickets is two thousand fourteen, is the six hundred and six thousand, a hundred and eighty dollars.
How much is it?
That is two hundred and six, uh.
So.
Uh-huh, a hundred and eighty dollars. That includes sale tax. The board has received a hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-one cents of that, that's actually sale tax, so, uh, Martin, uh, you have a total of ten thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, that's all, is two thousand fifteen, that's, uh. So, all we were recommending is to add a fee, so that these people that have paid the bond, see how, and one of them, see how, they buy a bond, the two thousand dollars, you know.
With, with twenty-five dollars, uh, this coin with twenty-five dollars?
If you would add, you can, they can take their bond out of that money.
And if you're, play, play two times off, uh, you can sell for a hundred and fifty, it's gonna five dollars, we, we.
I think, uh.
I'm sure that I don't say it off.
Right, uh, but we just, the bond, the cost of, uh, the, uh.
Lot for, lot for.
Lot for, it's lot for you.
And, and, yeah, that's, they, they all, they all, they, uh.
Do you have a lot?
So, this is your recommendations, and Mark?
Yes, yes, I thought he did here, some of the, uh, this, this, we do, don't recommend, uh.
Is there somebody we could, why that home, or they wouldn't have, have that home? Is there a way to do that?
No, the reason for it is, is they go over there and get two hundred of those figures, some pass tools, that they would be possible.
That's good. And that's why, that's why, I'm, 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 I'm doing a figure.
It would.
Okay, well, I'm all in favor of adding enough to it, but they can get their money back.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I have a question, uh, if, if they go and, and buy, to resell, now, they have to resell, and pay twenty dol, uh, twenty dollars, that's what it's now, that's what it's all about.
They can't, they can't go off on the process, and, uh, it has to be all of that, the board has to do that, do, um, uh, I didn't know what they're talking, if they could do, wonder if they want to. Martin, here, I'll, I'll do that, whether, um, if she has a, uh, three, 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 uh, five, uh.
We got enough one for one, I think, isn't it?
Uh, uh.
They're doing that to break y'all, so, and I, and I'm proud of them.
Can we make a lot, go back and, uh, make, um, but I'm not sure if, you know, I think not.
Yeah, that's, uh. As the sentence, when, when we talk, yeah, great, great, but I could have a lot, maybe, so I'll be, take it, yeah. Walk, walk, there he goes.
Well, I think, well, that's, that's, yeah, here's this on the first, I, I'm, 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 I'm so sorry, though, please, I apologize.
Go ahead, you, you go.
I know, it's, it's your threat, it's your threat. I'm, 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 although, the, uh, constituents out there, they want to vote for you, I understand.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Let me go again.
Well, we, uh, the same thing, we have to proceed, just, uh, uh.
I am, oh, I'm not sure, I'm not, I find that hard, Peter, um, I know that we use our money to, uh, build these, uh, I know that they won't allow us to have a surprise for an out of state resident or an out of category, so, uh, uh, I do know that. So, I can find out for sure tomorrow, but.
And we, so, now, we're doing that?
For going up on the?
We're not letting them?
I'm not sure, I, it doesn't make sense to me, because they, it's not, okay, it's, okay, it's, I mean, they're charging an out of state resident a larger money line than, than they are in state, and when we go to Georgia, it's also, so, I don't know, we're running now.
What's going on there?
Um, we start, we probably start locally, you know, you're not that, it's a lot of it, too.
I think, uh, and that's the, the, sort of, like, in person.
Yeah.
Yes, and my understanding is the reason they don't apply them to, uh, places, because they weren't affordable for the public to be able to receive, they grant, and they have funded so many of these programs that they, um, feel they're strongly, to understand that it's just, you know, low enough for the public.
Well, you know, I haven't had a lot of people to ask me, why can't we charge people more than we charge our people, because I mean, that's all, we pay for it, with our, with our tax base, and I've always, you know, they have the same answer, it's just, it's not something that we're allowed to do. Uh, I don't know if, you know, if anybody, maybe, has, you know, posed that question to them, and, and see, if they would ever pay, pay for that.
There is a process, you do have to go through the process, ever, but, you know. Well, I know that the regulations, uh, the ordinance, which you adopted, um, said that the deed for, use of the land may be changed by a regulation of forty companies. We did that, and we did the twenty dollars, and, uh, so, in that, that fifty dollars, fifty dollars, or, no, maybe, five dollars, whatever.
But, yeah, but, we have, uh, that's what we're hearing, really, just, uh, past the resolution, past the resolution, you're right, we're going to that one, and that's why we put it in there, so we have, uh, uh, definitely, uh, you, sir, we don't have to go through that process, you know. Can we do it tonight, or we have to wait until we get the resolution? I think, yes, and if you wanted to do it, tonight, you could, you know, the whole resolution, uh, subject is finding out what you can do, or not.
I'm gonna follow that out, and get it, and I'll get that, um, boy.
I'm gonna, yes, it's a way, you know, ask, um, our, um, back question, if I have to.
Uh, back question, uh, why, I'm, I'm, Peter, you had brought a vote, you better, uh, uh, we want to, uh, we, 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 I'm gonna back up, and, yeah, we, ask our company, you have the resolution, ending, uh, the test, well, I'll, uh, of, what Mark found out, or the D E C.
Right, that's, 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 uh, all, all this, it's, 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 well, you're getting a answer, they allow this, right, and if they do allow this, we got, uh, uh, but, uh, uh, first?
Raise twenty-five dollars?
Raise twenty, twenty-five, that's what's up, direct state, uh, to the media, I mean, you don't try that.
Yeah, this, this motion is just for you to write the resolution, and then once the resolution comes back, then we will vote on the resolution, whether we want to do that or not.
Yeah, I'll get that, the way that I do this, this, I'll get, I, I, I think that's a, a clean lady, a clean way to do it, uh.
Okay, so, I, I'll vote, we can do, put the resolution together, but I'm not going to vote to raise the, uh, so.
Only one step.
Thank you.
I'm more about the, I would say, residence, then we can do that, like.
I'm gonna find that out, for sure, I will get that in writing, if I'm, if I'm, about the outcome, is, I don't think, all right, thank you, so, we can, we can look at that.
I think I'll do that.
I do, too.
Uh, uh, yeah. Uh, how do you plan, um, uh, is, how's reimbursing the vendors, uh, how's that reward, you're giving a, a five dollars, or?
Yeah, well, that's the thing, we did the twenty-five dollars, um, we do the twenty-five dollars, then, um, of course, about sixty-four guns, D O R, they're gonna get their forty, three thirty-six, we got in the vendor, that's there. So, that's how it's like for them to do that, and if you're ready, it's back in the, the bond is, you know, expensive for them to have, um, we do have two, that come in, just purchase, straight out, and they sell for twenty dollars, and that's Maddie Market, and, um, Will, basically, yeah. So, probably have more, more, uh, decal, if there's, have. I, I think, I think so, I really do, um, that number, I mean, from, uh, let's see, since September two thousand fourteen, so, ten thousand, three hundred and nine decals, from September two thousand eighteen, so, that's a bunch of decals, just coming from, a lot of those came from Al, to begin with, and then they, you know, started to see, had the bond, seeing that they tackled it on. Now, I, this is a way to get more out there, because it's what we're looking at, and giving them incentive to, to sell.
And y'all just have online.
Yeah, yeah, we got them online, which are twenty-one, so we have to pay the votes, but, um, yeah, I mean, that type of breakout, for the board would receive twenty, exactly twenty dollars, would, would have worked out that way. Right now, you receive the eighteen sixty-nine, uh, dollars, thirty-one more.
And we have a question, uh, um, any, any further, a second, yes, sir.
But, are we talking about, everybody gonna pay twenty-five, or I don't think people will pay twenty-five, and local still pay twenty-five?
Everybody pays twenty-five, but this is a.
It ain't gonna do, I'm gonna tell you right now, but I think I'm not gonna go with it.
Now, if you still put your vote in the ballot, uh, we're just, for Georgia, or, San Antonio, wherever, right?
I go to Georgia, I want to fish, I gotta pay more money. They won't come down here fishing, they need to pay more money. I can't check that far, and if we can, I'm all for doing what you said, so, go. Get it, Georgia, I'm sure will pay more money, and they've been doing that for years and years, yeah, but we really need, we need to probably, we can.
Yeah, if we can, if we can, you know, charge more for out of state, I'm all for that, but I, I can't, I can't vote and charge our people anymore, but anyway, we've got a question, a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, that's fine, aye, motions here. Thank you.
Thank you, oh, that's a lead, good, uh.
Deborah, first.
You have, uh, uh, can I just email you some more? I'm sorry, God, what, let me say, it's four something, it's absolutely four, that is a great thing, I know you're missing, you're a great Georgia guy.
School, and, uh, school, and, uh, and my husband, cousin, uh, about twenty-five.
There's a pile of two, and, 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 so, good job, the board's having, with that, uh, thank you, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, I, I take that, take this down to, um, board informational items, so, we, so, can't stop, so, if you tonight?
That's interesting to see here, and, uh, we work with this board, we all work well together, and you see here, in fact, we've built our position, and we know we always win, so we don't leave good, and that's what happens, that's dad's, all, all the work, and, uh, like you, we go very well, strong, you have, or, they do, uh, that's about, about my life, we're all, the whole time, but, anyway, I don't have any search, any, things I need to bring up, thank you.
I think, uh, we can, for you.
Yeah, I, I, well, sometimes, do they have, talk about a lot of, uh, board, or? You didn't know, or?
Yeah.
See that?
Yeah, that, that, right?
Just, yeah, just, uh, that, and, uh, uh, you reported that, uh, the, uh, uh, protect, uh, dollars, uh, money, uh, 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 we're, we're, uh, by, uh, this point, uh, we're, we're, uh, we're, uh, uh, uh. And there's a, this is, this is, uh. Yeah.
Uh, oh, I was, I think we have another board meeting. Yeah?
Yeah, we're north of, uh.
But, uh, I just feel, appreciate everyone for coming, I appreciate, uh, all the, uh, that, 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 given me, uh, the, and the commissioner, I appreciate the cooperation, I appreciate, uh, uh, the board, and, and, uh, we, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, 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 what was, we, we, uh, from the floor, uh, is, is the floor?
Is that?
Obviously.
It's with pleasure, throughout, right, here, in, 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 uh, down, sit here, and listen, uh, I'm, I'm proud of y'all, telling, um, and, right, uh, the hope guys, what he does, uh, I mean, that is, but, we got good board, we all work together, and, uh, it's, it's, it's like, uh, I appreciate it.
Sure, what? The board, you have anything?
One thing, we, we get the, um, rules, as we said, um, we were very important, we got, um, the set, I did send you a letter, um, get, uh, uh, a little more head, the second thing I had, uh, workshop, uh, got, um, um, I, um, worked out, uh, a number, uh, of, uh, workshops, um, uh, uh, I don't, uh, um, and, um, get, work out, yeah.
There one other thing, workshop, the main topic will be the top three, the consortium, uh, restoring money, uh, very common, and identity, uh, of, will be here, due to presentation.
And that's thirty, uh, thirty and sixty?
Let's say, uh, sixty, sixty.
Okay, so, that, sir, tonight, we'll be talking about that, have all the, uh, residents, brands, company owners, and other bodies?
Working on, uh, uh, we're going.
I'll have to create a conference, and, um, so, have, not be, together, uh, uh, so, if we talk about, uh, like, I found it, if we lost, or, that, or, and these people have, and others, huh?
We will be, uh, uh, but you gave your, uh?
That's what I'm saying.
Gave it, uh?
Did I?
You gave it, uh?
Oh, what is it, no?
I'm, I'm.
Huh?
I'm, I'm.
They have a dollar, if you want, uh?
We might have, uh?
I think we owe it to, and we owe it, that we should know that, yeah, so they can make a plan, to be, that this is very, very difficult to deal, and it's very, uh, complex, uh. We get, you know.
It's good, it's, uh, Mark, it is.
It's, 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 uh, uh, Tom, it's, it's, and I know, we wanted to, you know, talk to, uh, Dr. Hudson, uh, you?
I have not, uh, like, uh, yeah, I did, in relation to that, uh, so, all the property owners, and, and I wanted to reach out to him, and it cost me, uh, it, it, and, uh, and, uh, so, all of it, so.
It is, uh, very, uh, uh, I'd like to, uh, we want, that this coming, uh, we had, uh, the county, uh, 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 and this, we held this year at, uh, not a few, uh, uh, because, normally, we have, uh, county, uh, uh, as a part of the hall, but this year, uh, um, the person that's, in charge of this, normally, uh, she is away, uh, leave, and so, um, it's been moved down here, because, uh, it's by understanding that, uh, they have a lot of other gifts, one, and one, that, and they want children. And so, um, it's been moved down here because, um, it's my understanding that, um, they have a lot of other gifts going on, and what's up, calling, and they have a lot of children there for the school. So it had to be moved downtown, but we're still having it, and it's for balance, and they're handling it, it's a free project. And we always have, uh, nicely, and, uh, uh, be, uh, uh, anybody, uh, who wants to, would like for you to come.
Right. Right.
Just like. Yeah, yeah, and, uh, I want to thank you all again for being here, and, uh, thank you for staying throughout the, uh, the meetings. My passion to get up and leave, so I'm glad that we're interested, so, and since you come back again, we enjoy having citizens to come and participate, and, uh, we'd like to make sure that. If anybody has anything they want to say, that if you have a lot of things to speak, that I'll be here. So, uh, again, thank you so much, and, um, I thank everybody else for being here, I thank you, Pastor. You've been so thankful to do, come and read us a prayer, and, uh, I tell you every time, um, come back again. And, uh, I want to say that it's, uh, an honor and privilege for me to sit in this chair. I don't take it, um, lightly, it's a, it's a very serious job, and I'm like, I'm gonna present more than I'll be here, well, and not. And, um, somebody else can sit here, I wish me, but you never know, but I I do enjoy my job, and I get an honor and a privilege. Anybody else have anything you want to say before, um, we make a motion to adjourn? Yes, on the, that's right, I have, on the, on Wednesday, the fourteenth, uh, we will have a thirty at nine a.m. And it is for the, um, um, I don't know if it's called, three, it's called, yeah, it's called audit report.
What I will mention.
Yes, that's the only thing we're gonna be going under that audit.
No, not, not.
Nine o'clock next.
I'll be there, that's always you.
Nick, Nick, not Nick Wizy, but the Nick.
Like, it's all, it's all.
Anybody else have anything you want to say? If not, um, if you're a motion to adjourn.
I vote.
You have a motion, a second, all anybody to say aye?
Aye.
All of those touch time, motion here.